February ninth, it's two o'clock and we're going to open the Board of County Commissioner Regular Workshop. First thing is our call to order and our invocation will be read by, I mean, led by Commissioner Adams, Zach, and our pledge by Commissioner Rawls. All stand if you're able.
Dear Lord, thank you for bringing us here together. Thank you for giving us the inspiration to serve our community and to be, just to take in everyone's opinions and everyone's thoughts and to take that and put it within ourselves and to pray to you for the best outcome that we can for our community as often as we possibly can. We know we're not going to get it right every time, but we should strive to always. And please allow us to be a light to those in our community who don't know you and allow us to reach out wherever we can as we go about our business as county commissioners as well as our businesses as individuals. In God's name I pray, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi Commissioners, thank you. Want to take a point of order real quick and something that came up. We're going to zoom in a gentleman in just a second that's going to make a quick presentation to you. I'll set the stage by saying my role with the Caucus of the Florida Association of Counties in the last few years have been broadband, broadband and broadband. Well, in the December Legislative Conference we had in Jacksonville, I had, I was hosting the meeting, I had Mario Rubio, the Director of the Department of Economic Opportunity and the broadband office there. And when I got done, he, these two gentlemen came over to me at the direction of our Communications Director, Craigan, and he said, they said, "We need to talk to you." And they have some exciting things to say about Putnam County and what's going to happen here. So, go ahead and zoom him in if you don't mind Jacob and we'll let him explain to the board as a whole what's going to take place. Zach, thank you for joining us. Zach, can you hear me?
He's muted.
Yes, sir, I can hear you.
Zach, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, I can hear you.
We're having technical difficulties.
Can you hear me?
Zach, if you could turn up the microphone volume on your end.
Okay, how's that? Better?
Zach, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
The suspense is killing me. Did you get a new car?
You what? I can't hear him.
I can hear you, uh, I'm clear, can you hear me?
Zach, I can't hear you.
I got my microphone up to one hundred.
Hey Jacob, if I call him on the phone, can you pick him up on my phone through here? Would that be okay? Okay. Because then you can pick him up and record him, can't you, or no? Sorry guys. You can hear him back there? Then put your microphone down so we can, you can just play it back through the... You have your cordless mic there? Okay, Zach, can you hear us?
Yeah, that's not going to...
Yes, sir, I can hear you.
Hey Zach, I'm going to put you on speakerphone and we're going to put you through this way, okay?
Okay, that'll be fine.
All right. Zach, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, I can hear you.
All right. All right, go ahead and do your presentations.
Okay, so, good afternoon, everybody. I'm Zach Dunlap, I'm with Inspired Technologies. We are the IT program for the Florida Association of Counties. So, we service several rural to medium and large sized counties across the state. And today, Commissioner Harvey asked us to kind of give you a debriefing on the rural broadband internet project that's going on right now in collaboration with the federal government and the state of Florida. And so, what we've, are going to specifically talk about today is the product that has kind of come out as the frontrunner, which is called SpaceX Starlink. SpaceX, as you know, is a company that is launching their own rockets on behalf of the federal government and several different Fortune 500 companies in the United States around the world. And they are commissioning a low orbit satellite based internet system. And the difference between their system and the Hughes nets and DirecTV is that these are flying in a lower Earth orbit where they have a, there has to be much more of them flying in orbit, but the internet speeds are twenty to fifty times faster than your conventional Hughes net internet. And at first, they were looking at doing a pilot program where they were just going to offer a few counties in Florida the ability to sign up for these services. However, they've successfully tested the equipment and have achieved speeds averaging around a hundred to a hundred and fifty megabytes per second download to twenty-five to seventy-five megabytes per second upload, which is faster than any DSL service that is out there today. And in most of the rural areas, faster than just about anything that you can get on the open market. SpaceX is looking at doing what they call angel accounts or in, specifically what they're calling it is is the need for a benevolent party or a community of disconnected users that don't have the financial capability of obtaining SpaceX services, which, to kind of circle back, SpaceX is right around five hundred dollars upfront for the equipment with a cost of ninety-nine dollars a month. We can call that a hundred dollars a month for the service. What they're specifically targeting is specific areas of the country. They're more interested in what they call is, if you ever look at the map of the United States, what they call flight line or lines of latitude. What they're specifically trying to do is, is make sure they have enough users in a single line of latitude to dedicate a satellite to cover that area. And in this instance, they're putting up roughly around ten thousand satellites in space. And so, they're trying to cover costs associated with that. Commissioner Harvey, is there any questions?
No, you continue and then we'll ask questions when we're done.
Okay, so, basically what the, and I've sent this to Commissioner Harvey for what they're looking at as far as angel accounts goes, is they're looking at a minimum of one year of service and the cost of the equipment upfront. And what they're looking at doing is this basically filling out pre-registering users. Now, this is, the angel account, of course, is for disenfranchised or socioeconomic issues where people can't afford those services. However, they're, they're also going ahead and getting people who can financially afford those services to go ahead and preregister and sign up for, for the SpaceX Starlink product. They're looking at a launch date or what they call is a go-live date in Florida around the summer, July to be specific of 2021. And at that time, they're hoping to have at least eighty-five percent coverage of the state of Florida at all times. And then by the fall, having one, well, they, they won't call it a hundred percent, they call it ninety-nine percent full availability.
Okay. All right, any questions for Zach Commissioners?
Zach, this is Jeff Rawls. So, this is what Jeff Bezos was wanting to do for quite a while. This is his low orbit trash cans, as he called it at one point. So, the, the end users, you're, you're saying a hundred plus megabits per second, is that correct?
It'll be around a hundred to a hundred and fifty megabytes per second.
No, it's okay.
This is a, so there's two, two competing companies in that space race right now. One is Amazon, the other one is SpaceX. So, you've got Elon Musk with SpaceX and Jeff Bezos with Amazon. Amazon's product, which is called Project Kuiper, is about two years away from being market ready, per Amazon's best guesstimate. SpaceX is already in service now, which is, they've proven to be the more viable product. That doesn't mean that in the future that, you know, several different companies may be ready to go to market. It's just that SpaceX, right, for right now, is the, is the first.
And then the, the equipment cost, do you have a rough idea of what an average household would spend to purchase the equipment?
Yes, sir. So, four hundred and ninety-nine dollars is the upfront cost for the Starlink dish. And the ninety-nine dollar a month service fee is for a household fee. But that gets you what they call is basic connectivity. They don't have it broken out in tiers yet, only because they're, they're saying that at a minimum, they're giving a hundred meg download with twenty-five upload.
All right, so, when we're out and about talking to people in the community, if I understand you correctly, they're rolling it out starting December of 2020 through this July, is that correct?
Yes, sir. There'll be full connectivity or they call availability to Florida by July 2021, 2021.
Twenty-one, okay. Is there, is, do you know anything about, is there any latency issues at all? Are people going to be able to stream if they're into streaming video or anything like that?
So, to be quite honest, we've gotten our hands on one of these units and done some test trials ourselves. We signed a non-disclosure agreement with SpaceX not to reveal their trademark secrets, but they're down to thirty milliseconds latency, which is faster than your conventional DSL now.
Yep, okay.
And the most, and I would say ninety-five percent of the market is above thirty milliseconds in latency.
And then, last question for right now at least, is there any sort of long-term terms or a long-term agreement that has to be entered into by the end user?
They're looking at a one-year agreement, a twelve months, and then after the twelve months, it goes to a month-to-month agreement.
Okay.
Mr. Adams, Zach?
I shut off my mic.
Okay, Mr. Pickin?
And what did you say the price was? Did you say that the ninety-nine dollars was for financially challenged individuals or homes? Or is it ninety-nine dollars for basic for everybody?
Ninety-nine, basically for everybody.
Okay.
The, the federal government has already given SpaceX close to about fifty-eight million dollars alone for subsidizing the equipment for Florida users. And they're anticipating that they're going to continue subsidizing the cost relative to them launching the satellites. However, the cost for the equipment, that five hundred dollars one time for the dish and the ninety-nine dollars a month will be their standard pricing for everyone.
But will that be waived for, I'm not clear on that, the five hundred?
Hey Zach, is there any type of grants Commissioner Rawls is asking or waiver on the five hundred?
So, there are, there are grants that are available through the United States Department of Agriculture for broadband, for rural initiatives. There are also grants for, what they call for underserved rural communities. These grants vary in size from state grants to federal grants. There's, there's actually quite a few of these out there that can be utilized. The, the only downside to that is that the grants have to be applied for by a government entity, whether that's a municipal government or a county government. And then the county or municipality has to then dictate how the grant structure would work, how they would go about signing up services and then setting up what the threshold's for, who qualifies and who doesn't qualify.
All right, Zach, I want to kind of talk about what we talked about in the past. You were looking, or SpaceX was looking for some kind of commitment of users in our areas. And it first came to be about Putnam was a test site and now it's kind, we all know it's kind of opened up. But we were talking about thirty people in geographic areas. Would you kind of expound on that just a little bit?
Yes, sir. So, specifically, the way that these satellites work is in coverage areas. And what they're looking for is basically, to kind of sum up things, would be thirty users in North Putnam, and thirty users in West Putnam, and thirty users in South Putnam. So that they can kind of gauge from there where the, the greater focus of their satellites would be at. And keep in mind that these satellites are about the size of a laptop computer. They're not very big and then there's going to be thousands of these things flying across the sky at any given moment. So, they're trying to dedicate a satellite to a specific line of latitude.
Okay. Now Zach, we talked about, and this will be the first time the Commissioners have heard this, but we talked about if there was something that the County Commission could do to jumpstart this program in the business community and in the residential community. And yesterday, we talked about a number of, let's say ninety of these, of these units at five hundred dollars would cost the county about forty, forty-five thousand dollars. If we partnered with people, let's say at the two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar mark and somebody in a private person or a business paid two-fifty, then we could see a hundred and eighty users out there throughout the county. And we had that conversation yesterday.
Yes, sir. So, I've sent you the contact information for the angel account program that they're doing for communities. And it's right on point with what Commissioner Harvey was saying. What they're looking at doing is getting, basically, users lined up. And specifically in this program, they're looking at having government entities, whether that's, you know, municipal, county, tribal governments, go ahead and pre-purchasing or offsetting the cost of these units for their citizens.
Okay, so then, basically what I'm hearing you say is that that would make a big splash in the pool and show a commitment that Putnam County is serious about trying to address broadband in this fashion. Could be businesses, we might have a level for that, and it could be residential. And even if businesses have high-speed internet, it might be a redundancy system that they would have. So, any other further questions for Zach? I know it's kind of...
Well, I've, I've got another one. So, Zach, this is Jeff Rawls again. Under the, the angel program, if, if I understand what Commissioner Harvey saw, we put up forty-five thousand dollars. We get the folks to chip in two-hundred-and-fifty each. We get ninety thousand dollars, we can put up a hundred and eighty households. But would the, would we have any, any responsibility in paying for the service if they, if they just got to the point where they couldn't afford it any longer? Or, you know, how does that, that end up at work?
I'm actually not quite sure about the inner workings of how SpaceX writes those agreements. They've been kind of hush-hush about that, just because they're not, they're, they're not at liberty to kind of disclose some of that information, I guess, against the competition, but I'd be more than happy to send you the contact information for the North America sales. Actually, she's in charge of all sales for Starlink across the globe. And any of those questions, you'd be more than happy to ask her and she'd probably be able to answer.
Here's the next question. You may not have even pondered this, but is there a revenue sharing? Or is there any kind of, you know, the, we own the airspace above us, obviously, and if the money only flows to SpaceX, how do the municipal governments that have utility, what's the term I'm looking for, taxes, collect on that? And if we were to get into that business one day, how would we collect?
I have no idea how they have that set up. And unfortunately, I don't think there's any parameters that the federal government has issued out other than when the fact, when Starlink is approved as a, and they call it something different within some of the federal government, something like a carrier. When they're considered a utility carrier, then they can be taxed. And then those tax dollars would go, would flow back to the county. As of right now, I don't think there's any sort of revenue share program. And again, the Inspired has been in contact with SpaceX on behalf of the Florida Association of Counties. We, we don't have any sort of revenue share program or anything like that set up with SpaceX. This is just kind of us doing the due diligence work, kind of the yeoman's work, if you will, to bring a lot of this information to bear. I don't think that Star, SpaceX is interested in doing any sort of revenue share back to the municipalities. They've made it a point to, in our conversations, to kind of shy away from that due to they're basically being subsidized by the federal government already. So, they're receiving incentivization from the federal government to perform these services. And I don't know from a tax standpoint of when they will be considered a utility carrier.
Mr. Adams, Zach?
Yeah, so this all sounds really great. And the one concern I have in listening is the other half of that FCC grant went to Windstream. So, I would say if we're going to offer one company ninety thousand dollars to help infrastructure and help us get people on internet, Windstream might be able to get as many people or more with ninety grand onto wired service that's just as fast and actually less latency, only because I have both. I don't have SpaceX though. I do have, so there is an option as well through ViaSat. ViaSat, it's more expensive, it's two-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars a month. ViaSat will get you a hundred megabits today with or higher, but the latency is about a hundred milliseconds instead of thirty. So, I have read a lot about SpaceLink, I'm excited about it. But if we were ever to fund something as a government, I think we would have to open that up to all participants and see who could actually get us the most coverage and people for the money.
Right, and I think that that would be probably better captured doing invitation to negotiate, rather an RFP or an RFQ, is bringing that to bear, basically looking for an ISP to, our internet service provider, ISP, to provide services to the following geographical constituents. So, one of the issues that I will tell you that Windstream does have is the, the grant process that was given out by the FCC was not favorable to your terrestrial ISPs, terrestrial internet service providers. It was more geared toward your wireless and satellite based companies. Two million dollars for upgrades in infrastructure would not go very far inside Putnam County from a wireline standpoint. The, they would have to upgrade this, a significant amount of their infrastructure in order to obtain speeds even close to a hundred meg download. And unfortunately, I think that was probably some short-sightedness of the federal government at the time that they put those grants out. But nonetheless, if you were to put out an invitation to negotiate, to offer those services at a reduced rate or, you know, whatever the stipulations points that you put inside that invitation to negotiate, you could certainly send that out and that would be a, a way to make sure that you're covering your bases and not doing a sole selection or some sole sourcing from a single vendor.
I have another question.
And that's, that's my only point, is sole sourcing without giving the others opportunity.
Yeah.
And there is, there is a movement in Hawthorne proper, in, in Alachua County, in western Alachua County as well, to, they're looking to reutilize some cable lines. And there is a provider that is looking to come in from the west end of Putnam County if we have the cable lines. And I don't know how we'd establish if that infrastructure is there and being unused that is saying they can do a hundred megabits as well.
Commissioner Rawls?
So, Zach, are you, are you familiar with the Microsoft product that, that is out? Back in the spring of two thousand and nineteen, Congressman Yoho hosted a teleconference and Microsoft had a representative on the phone. They have a product that could accomplish the last mile internet as well, where it has a unidirectional antenna that broadcasts and about every ten to fifteen miles, you'd have to have another repeater. Are you familiar with that?
Yes, sir, I am. So, that technology, the air fiber, is kind of what they were calling it, is still in beta. They haven't had a successful deployment. They're still doing a lot of testing on it. One of the major issues there is because even though they can do wireless transmission, they still have to go fiber back to a backlink where they have to run fiber on to those disparate repeaters. So, even though the repeater is technically pushing the signal down the line, there's still some fiber connectivity from that site back to a local data center. And unfortunately, between Microsoft, AT&amp;T has also got a product out there. They're all very much in their infancy and are not grant eligible from the federal government at this time. In fact, the, the grant dollars that have been approved out there are for Putnam County are between two vendors, Windstream and SpaceX.
My, my, I guess my only concern is that if we jump the gun and we start pushing the SpaceX product, which I'm, I've been waiting for this for a long time. I've been reading about it, hearing about it, and here it is. And, you know, it's ahead of 5G, obviously, because we don't have that here and that's another platform. I just don't know if, if we, if we could get ourselves in a sticky position because Microsoft is around the corner with what they're, what they're calling air fiber now. It's, and they're saying it's going to be a lot more stable with less latent, they're, they're talking less than thirty millisecond latency with the air fiber. Because that was one of my, my concerns when we're on the phone with Microsoft. And they, they have deployed it in some areas, but the areas they told me about were larger areas. So, we have pine trees and we have people that are sparsely, we're sparsely populated, spread out. But I'm, I, I'm not sure... But I'm not sure what we're being asked to consider today. Okay, so I thought maybe they were looking for us to support this and sign on and, okay, okay. I could just see everybody coming at us saying, "This is not fair."
No, the reason for this call basically was to inform the commissioners of what's coming down really, really quick. If we wanted to partner somehow to help our community, we can do that. Or we can just go out in our community and say Boswick needs 15 people to sign up. And I know one sitting to your far left that probably would be interested in it. So we could beat the drum that if you need high speed, it's here. It's coming. It's coming very fast. Now, is it going to be the answer that you need five years from now? I don't know that. But we don't have to do any financial commitment. Or we could say we have some pots of money available and we'd like to do a business grant or a residential grant. We can do pretty much whatever we want to help economic development in our county.
No, I would have zero opposition to putting some money out there. The only caveat would be that to Commissioner Adams' point, if we do for one, we might want to make this available because who knows what? Right now, we're at the Sony Betamax versus VHS format conversation. Somebody's going to prevail. Not everyone will prevail. There's not enough space in the market for everybody to have that much connectivity. And who knows what Comcast and AT&amp;T might want to do in our community? So, you know, I'm looking at it from a revenue perspective for the county. I think that there's potential here for it, but also to do the right thing for the citizens that don't have. It just pains me to hear the words or the letters DSL and mention it in a sentence because it takes you back to 1999 when we were building the future in Jacksonville and we were going to have DSL capability. So we're that far behind the times.
Well, what's exciting is when we started the conversation was that Putnam County was going to be one of the test site counties in Florida. That's what really excited me in Jacksonville that day. And that's what kept me plugged in with Zach because somebody's finally hearing us out there going, "We need, we need, we need." And undoubtedly, this company has looked at us and said, "Yeah, there's a need there." So Zach, we're going to probably let you off and I hope you...
One more thing I could, just in the interest of full disclosure. Zach, the $500 for the hardware, have you seen the hardware?
Yes, sir, I have.
Does it include, it includes some sort of a modem, antenna and a router, correct?
So it comes with a wireless modem router, decabling the antenna dish and a mount stand. The only thing that's different is that if you choose to do a ridge mount on a rooftop or if you do a pole mount, there's a different adapter kit that you have to select whenever you order the equipment.
So my point that I'm going to do is I just spent 320 bucks for a new router and a new modem. So it's really not that far out of line if you're comparing it to something that's coming in with copper, you know, and $200 difference is the antenna that I didn't have to pay for. But it sounds like a good value. $99 a month is probably on average, for 100 megabyte download, that's pretty good.
That'll help our businesses be productive. Yes, Mr. Adams, eh?
I'm thinking of students.
Oh, I'll say this, and some might think it sounds selfish, but I have three different internet service providers in my house because I have no choice but to have availability in my house 24 by 7 because of my other employment. I can stress-test whatever they have and get real results and stuff. And I know they're doing betas and stuff, but from a Putnam County standpoint, I have the capability to do that and I'd be willing to pay for the service fully and do that if they were interested in that. So I don't know if they're looking for that type of work either, but I could definitely find out what the millisecond response time is as well as how it affects a VPN-type connection, which is where we can't lose sight of even 30 milliseconds a second. If you have a VPN like the one I operate on for my work, which requires six trips in order to get authenticated to even log in, 30 milliseconds times six all of a sudden turns into 1. something seconds. So I'd be more than happy to do that. I've done it with three other vendors. I've kept all three only because of my requirement to have something available at all times. And so just want to put that out there.
Well, Zach, we really greatly appreciate you in looking at Putnam County, bringing this to our attention. And, you know, now that we know what we know, we can go forward and we can talk about what the future looks like at that point. And I look forward to you getting feeling better and coming down and having a meeting face-to-face with us about some opportunities, okay?
Yes, sir. I appreciate it. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Yeah, that worked out okay. Not the best, but it was fun. Want to go, well, there was people in the audience and now there's none. Want to go to public comment on agenda items? Is there any public comment on agenda items, please? Is there? Come up to the microphone. Come up to the microphone, Mr. Hayes, please.
The discussion you just had, is that considered an agenda item?
I'm sorry?
The discussion that you just had a moment ago, is that considered...
Well, it's not agenda, but the chair will give a little latitude on that because it wasn't on our agenda today. But go right ahead and you'll have three minutes, sir.
Sure. I just, I was fortunate to have an opportunity to listen to what you had to say. And where I'd like to point out concerns would be what I would consider an unfunded liability for the people that really do need internet, which are the ones that have lower incomes. $100 a month is a big burden. Otherwise, they would be doing other services that are already to their availability. But one way that you could get to where they could get their fingerprint into the county and be a competitor is by, if you did make purchase of the satellite systems, is to provide those at community centers. Because now you've made an opportunity for several people to go to a community center and pull up a Wi-Fi. And now, coincidentally, the library was able, I think through the CARES Act, got a grant to provide Wi-Fi hotspots throughout the community. I don't know if you're aware of that, but you might want to find out where she has decided to place those. And one of the suggestions, again, would be to utilize the community centers because that way you get a multiple amount of people to be able to use it, general public versus a business providing a hotspot, which they'd be capitalizing on it in regards to a marketing tool. And so then that might value the expenditure versus trying to partnership with businesses. And then the other possibility would be that if there's a correlation with the SafeLink and a couple of the other ones where they're subsidized for internet or telephone, that if we can get to where the people that need it, the poor folk, can use that as a service with the subsidy of the low-cost to no-cost internet. And right now, AT&amp;T has a lock on it and one other outfit. And they're competing. And the other part too, though, as a technician, I'm an aviation electronics technician specializing communications, and I hate to say it, but the fiber optic system is the ultimate because we have weather effect. And with your satellite systems, you're reliant upon clear weather or really crappy weather. It's really weird. But that middle of the road, it's going to fluctuate. And so then people that are, let's say, in the medical transkip opportunity for self-employment at home, that kind of thing, they need reliability of the internet and where if you're, that's why a lot of people don't do satellite because of the fluctuation of weather events. So then we might want to look at some of the AT&amp;T and the fiber optic, which they are the king right now in the state of Florida. And if you look along the highways, they're continually putting in fiber optics and primarily it's because of your medical industry and your government. And so if we're going to provide the best for our citizens, apparently the infrastructure's there. They just need people to tap into it. And so through the SafeLink process, which is the low-cost availability and the fiber optics, that by just simply doing the networking, we might be able to make internet available.
Well, I'm not so sure that we want to make it other than go out and beat the drum that it's out there and sign up. So that's my point on that. Some of the fiber that they're putting down, I know out in West Putnam, been cut, spliced, stretched so much. They're not putting new stuff down. And to your point of availability or affordability, you know, some people pay a lot more than the $99 a month because they're held hostage with the phone, their streaming and their internet. So maybe this is just another arrow in their quiver, if you will, that they can go back to. Mr. Adams, eh?
Yeah, no, I'm surprised that you didn't take the opportunity to say this because you've said it in the past in meetings, but the USDA grant that he did mention is a get-in-line grant. So we really need to submit that grant that's through, and I could find the website again and share it. I did share it when I was a candidate at some point with somebody. I don't know where it went. But that is basically, there's tons of people already on it. We never got in line, but it is, as they get people the grants in different rural areas, they do get to the next one. So it may be 10 years if we got approved for it today before they ever get to us, but we will never be on the list if we don't put ourselves on the list. So that is something that we need to pursue from the grant perspective. And it is something that you and I have talked about in the past. So I actually thought that's what you were going to go up here and tell us.
Well, I didn't want to be redundant, but now that we talk about money sources and stuff like that, one of the ideas too, because our emergency communication system is, needs to be upgraded, that there might be a possibility of a scenario where that by utilizing a satellite system that we could, and they want to strike deals and do some competitive, is that that might be one of the options versus having to get repeater towers is where they're working off a satellite system, which will give more remote capability and a funding source.
It's just exciting that we have somebody looking at Putnam County because all I've been hearing about for the time I've been here, no one looks at Putnam County. Well, they are now. So thank you, Mr. Rawls.
So really, my position is simple. I think the sooner that we can get ourselves into this space as a provider, as a utility, the better off the taxpayers will be for several reasons, but least of all because of affordability. And then the obvious revenue possibility from it. So, you know, I'm not necessarily in favor of government doing a whole lot for the public. This is one of these things where if we were having this conversation 20 years ago, not many people were connected in Putnam County. I remember waiting for George Brown to get his system online and remember that. So I've been around it long enough to remember that. But this is here to stay. I don't see any other way around it. It's like having electricity. And I'm really wondering, sitting here wondering why the electric companies haven't figured a way to shove it through the power lines. Because all you need is two conductors to have your internet connectivity. But I think that at some point in time, it's going to be beneficial to all of us to take a look at what Gainesville did with GRU and their regional utility business. And they provide data and we might be able to as well because you're not going to get private companies to come in here and go out to the stretches of Boswick and down in the south end of the county, the west end of the county. Because we're so spread out, it's just not worth it to them to put the hard infrastructure in. And I'm not sure, I'm not a doubting Thomas, but I've been waiting a long time for these flying trashcans, low-orbit satellites. And to hear that they're available, it's exciting. But the proof will be in the pudding when it actually gets functional and we see the reliability of it versus hard line. I personally am a consumer that uses cable for internet. And I stream TV. I don't have cable TV like some folks do. So it's going to be an interesting conversation moving forward, but we really have to keep ourselves, you know, open to anything that comes down the road.
I agree. Mr. Adams, eh?
Yeah, so the site is USDA.gov/broadband and it gives you several options. You've probably been down there, but one of them is the current grant. But that was, we didn't have to apply for that. The federal government did that. But there's about eight different options, whether it's a grant, grant loan or loan-only type thing. So if staff, if you guys could look at that, that would be fantastic.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Appreciate it.
Mr. Adams, eh, or gentlemen, one of the things about the USDA grant is they have deadlines. And a lot of the grants to our availability have deadlines right now. And so I call it spring fever, the cycle of our government grants. They have posted them. They're going to start to reach deadline. And then if we're lucky, they'll repost it just before budget meetings and stuff like that so they can spend all their resources so they can ask for more money.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. I see Jerry Davis and Kenneth Eubanks are not here, so we'll just move on. Port Authority, there is no other further comments from the public? Okay, we're going to move on to Port Authority workshop and public comment on Port Authority items. Is there any public comment? Okay, commissioners, or is there any general discussion on Port Authority? We kind of handled that this morning. So we're going to adjourn our Port Authority workshop and go to the BACC workshop. I see Craig McLean and Sam Carr are not here for their presentation. I know Craig was not feeling well, I don't think.
Yes, sir. We've made a few attempts. Sarah has to try to reach out and has not been able to confirm they'd be here today. We understand he's been under the weather, so we'll continue to work with Mr. McLean on getting this brought back.
Good. We'll put that off to the next workshop then at that point. Parks and Recreation, Nine Mile Property Update. I guess, Mr. Stevens, that's yours to go from?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, gentlemen. I was requested to give an update on the Nine Mile Swamp property. So a quick history of it, we got the property back around 2011 with our management plan. Couldn't follow through with all of the items that we wanted to achieve. Started talking with the Florida Communities Trust about possibly reverting the property back to FCT. Sent a letter to them in 2018 requesting the reversion. They looked at it and after a couple of years, they said there's a couple of issues with some properties, some structures that are on the Nine Mile Swamp property itself. Most of you know the house structure that's up there off the highway. They wanted us to remove those, brought that to the board last year. And the board did not want to proceed with the removal of those properties. Sent another letter back to FCT requesting, you know, them go ahead and revert the property. They sent us back another email saying that they're not going to be able to move forward with giving the property to another manager unless that structure is removed. And that's why I'm here today, to see if we can move forward with removing the structure that's currently on Nine Mile Swamp.
Okay, so we're only talking about the house. We've already removed the Quonset Hunt that was in there, the metal building that was inside the property?
No, sir. They want to keep that.
They want to keep that?
Yes, sir. That was one of the buildings they wanted to keep. So the only structure that's left for demolition is that house itself.
Okay. One other question. I'll turn it over to Commissioner Adams, eh? If we remove that house or that house is no longer there, then they'll send that property over to water management to manage that property? Is that what they're considering?
Yes, sir. I believe that is probably going to be their course of action. My understanding is from the emails going back and forth that the only thing holding up the, giving the property to another property manager is the destruction of that property.
All right. Commissioner Adams, eh, you have the floor.
For the management plan, what is the cost to complete the management plan or to come back up to speed on it? Only because I don't have the history of it. I read the management plan. It looks like a pretty cool idea, but what has been done? So like if the total was so much money, how much are we short of doing that?
From some of the preliminary estimates, it was over a million dollars to some of the things that they were, that the management plan itself had.
Yeah, there was like boat docks and trails and...
Yes, sir. It was quite expensive.
So JR and I went out there yesterday and we looked at it for the potential to use it as a training exercise to burn the building. The idea, and it doesn't seem like that would be, because I think you, the same estimate that company said they'd still stay with the 3,200.
Yes, sir. $2,900, they would honor that one.
So given that the price was less than $3,500, it didn't make sense from a JR perspective to do the analysis of the building, to check for asbestos and all the other stuff that has to be done to do a burn. But he did say that we do have the opportunity, if we decided to raise the build, to get rid of the building, that in the meantime, between now and whenever that date is, that there could be some training exercises. And, you know, I don't know the ins and outs of the training exercises, but there's some search and rescue stuff they could do in the building and use it for training purposes in the meantime that could benefit our fire and rescue people. So I just wanted to bring that to light since we went out there yesterday and checked it out.
Kevin, are you, thank you. Kevin, could we possibly put this, can we just give the house away if somebody wanted to move it and have no liability there? I mean, put it on the street that free house, move, end of story?
I would think, Commissioner, that the moving of the house would be more than the house is probably worth itself. And that's kind of the whole goal of the management.
But if you don't have a house, it might be worth quite a bit if you had a piece of land and you go, "I don't have a house, but I got land." I don't know the answer there.
Well, it's a concrete block.
More than new construction.
It's a concrete block structure, so that...
Oh, it's a block? I thought it was a...
Yeah, I believe there's a block underneath there at the bottom.
It's a frame structure.
Yes.
Mr. Adams, eh?
I think we would be taking a house that looks somewhat blighty and moving it to another location and having another blight location somewhere else in the county that honestly, anyone could call in a... that honestly, anyone could call in and complain about it as soon as they moved it. So I don't know if that's a... If, if the structure was better than what I saw when I went in there yesterday, I would be like, yeah, but it's, it's, it's not totally terrible, but there's, there's holes in the ceilings, the roof is shot. The floor is spongy. There's, it looks like people might have squatted in there at some point. The heating system and all that is gone. So there's, you're basically just have some wood frame there with, you know, had I gone in there and it was a lot better and the carpet was usable, I, I would say, yeah, but it's, it's not. I think it'd be a stretch, and for three thousand dollars, it seems like if that's, if our will is to get it out of our hands, because, and the biggest thing when I talked to Mr. Suggs about it was, it is a liability
Yeah.
from an insurance standpoint and other things, and I don't know, that liability might cost us more per year than, than the cost of knocking down the building. So...
Mr. Pickens?
Yeah, I think back when we were, made the final decision to send it back to the, the state, I think our mindset was they gave it to us with those structures on it. We didn't put them up, correct?
No, sir.
And that they could have it back with those structures on it, and I understand it was three thousand bucks, but if this will make it go away, and that's what we all agreed, we want it to go away, then we probably ought to go ahead. Where would the money come from? General reserves or out of Parks and Rec's budget?
I would be willing to take it out of my budget.
All right, I'm going to remember that when you say, we don't have any money.
Well, I don't know if that's...
Well, there's a will, there's a way, sir.
So we're talking three thousand dollars to remove the building. I don't know if we need to take it out of your budget. I mean, it, you didn't, you didn't go for this, this wasn't your thing, and if that's all it's going to take to clean this up, I think we can find the money in general reserves to take that.
Mr. Suggs isn't listening.
Three thousand, I was talking about it.
Yeah. I, I, I think it's over. I think the convers- I'm with, yeah, Mr. Suggs, did you?
We'll make it happen, Mr. Chairman.
So we don't have to make a motion or anything?
No, sir. It's...
They do need a motion to remove the property.
Okay.
Yes, because of the surplus property, we need a motion to move that.
Mr. Rawls?
So moved.
You made a motion to remove the house off that Nine Mile Swamp property?
Second. That's fine.
Proper motion by Mr. Rawls, proper second by Commissioner Adams. Any further discussion on removing the ho- home off of Nine Mile Swamp by demolishing it, right? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, the ayes have it. Okay, good.
And can we...
Let's get that thing done.
In the meantime, can we work with JR to possibly do their training out there? And I don't know that, do we, do we need to do anything to allow him to do that, or that's perfect?
You, you don't like a controlled burn or?
No, no, they're, it didn't, doesn't qualify for that.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll communicate with the crew that's going to be responsible, the vendor that's going to do it, and get a general timeline for him, and I'll, I'll get with Mr. Grimes on what date they give us, and that gives him enough the opportunity to plan some training events prior to that. I mean, they may come out and do it next week.
JR, do you want to, do you want to just let us know what those trainings would be? And I think you've gone as far as saying that you possibly could have a partnership with Placa to maybe have some of their fire people out, maybe?
Sure. We could use it for search and rescue training. It still fits that bill. We could do some ventilation training. We got fog and smoke machines that don't cause any hindrance. We could put some of those in there and teach people ventilation. Probably do some ladder drills, you know, do some wall breaches and stuff, because it's going to be surplused out, it's going to go away, so if we knock a few holes in the walls, it's not going to be that big a deal. We could do some escape drills out of the windows that are there. There's, there's a multiple things we could do. Partner with the, the city of Placa, they could probably send some crews out, you know, have a couple of training days, and if, if time prevails, that we can have enough for between when the contractors are getting there. I asked Mr. Stevens yesterday if he'd just tell me if it's six weeks. We know we got five weeks to train, and we'll get two or three of them out of it, and then it makes it kind of worth, you know, at least spending some dollars on, because we're getting some benefit out of it on the fire rescue side, so...
Can we do this? Can we put signs up that this is a training?
Absolutely. Yeah, yeah. We, we can put up a sign out on the road that said, we're training, exercise in progress, and...
Because our phones will be ringing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, that's no problem. We, we can do that, sure.
Thank you. SWAT wants to go in first.
Do what?
The SWAT team wants to go in first.
Exactly. Is it, I mean, it's safe enough to do, right, JR?
Absolutely.
Okay, good, good. All right. The next thing is Jim? I think Jim wants to come up and talk to us about your, the comprehensive plan workshop. You got a book in your office or in your cubby yesterday, the comprehensive plan, so Jim, the floor is yours.
Mr. Chair, thanks. Members of the commission, Jim Toronto, Putnam County Planning and Development Services. As was discussed, the planning commission has diligently moved forward with the review and revising of the comp plan for Putnam County. Mike Brown, staff, our consultant, the commission worked very hard to come to this point that we are today. So they have unanimously voted to move this document on to you for review. We understand that you would like to have a workshop, so we would like to work with you on identifying a day or days that we could get together with staff and our consultant to go over the comp plan and prepare for the next processes that we have in front of us as far as transmitting, and then the public hearings that we would have to move forward. So staff has provided to each of the commissioners a blue binder. You should have gotten it in your office, or yesterday we put a binder in front of your door, Commissioner Adams. So that's the actual comp plan itself. We do have it electronically. However, we gave you an opportunity so you can start thumbing through and seeing the work that was done by the planning commission and staff. So, Mr. Chair, I'm prepared to answer any questions that you have, but I believe your direction was, let's look at setting up dates for a workshop or workshops to discuss the comp plan.
Yeah, that, that's correct. And also, Mr. Brown has expressed that he could come back, as long as his new employer felt obliged to do that, and I think that's happened. Is that correct?
It has. So to let the record reflect, Mr. Brown is leaving Putnam County for a position in another county. So yes, we have talked to him, and he's open to coming back, and I know Mr. Suggs would be reaching out to his supervisors to have him back at these meetings. He is the expert in this field for us. He was there from the inception to its conclusion, so he'll be an asset to have, and he's agreed to come back at whatever meetings you so desire.
All right. So, and basically, you were looking at a full day of comp plan, review, lunch, and come back and finish up the day, if that's the will of the board. And I know that's, maybe if we can get Mike for, Mr. Brown for a day, that might satisfy that. Is that what you're...
I think initially, that's, yes, sir. Mr. Chair, I believe that was our intent to move forward with that. I, I don't know truly how long it's going to take, what questions that we may have, what questions you have or the community may have, what other new concepts may come up from the community that you may want to consider. So we're looking at a day. We hope that that will resolve that, the obligation that we have in front of us. It may take longer. So I think we ought to start with a day, and if it takes less, great. If it takes longer, then the board certainly could evaluate to evaluate the circumstances and then move forward potentially with another meeting. Time certainly on our side.
Yeah, I know there's some conflicts with, I, I'd like to do Tuesday, but you have a special magistrate on, on most, what Tuesdays is that?
I have to look at the calendar itself to see, but if, we, we can certainly work with the special magistrate if necessary. Mr. Suggs?
I believe it may be that third Tuesday. Did we not have the conflict when we had our last third Tuesday meeting?
We did. Yes, sir. I think it was.
Conflict on that third. Well, what about, what about March second, the first Tuesday of the month? Would that be a, because we can have the room. It's not in conflict with anybody at that point.
Mr. Chair, I believe if that's your direction from staff, we'll just make it happen, unless we have something else that you know of, Mr. Suggs?
Not without having access to everyone's calendars, but if that's a date that you would like for us to look at, we can have your response as quickly as tomorrow.
JR's probably got your calendar. Commissioner Adams, how do you feel about the second, the March second?
Should be fine.
Commissioner Rawls?
I, I'll make myself available. I mean...
Are you, now, let me ask you the other question. I mean, you're talking an all day?
I'm free that day, by the way.
So are we talking all day? Just go in here and knock it out?
Yeah, I, I have no problem with it at all. I wouldn't mind if we met once a week, starting some of the stuff hammered out, to be honest with you.
I agree. No, I...
Four Tuesdays in a month, let's nail them.
Okay, so let's plan on all day, starting at nine o'clock on Tuesday, the second, comp plan review, we'll break for lunch. We'll do hour and a half lunch, come back at one-thirty, and then from twelve to one-thirty, and then we'll finish up that afternoon. Okay?
Okay, so starting at eight-thirty?
Nine.
Nine?
Nine o'clock.
Okay, we can make the advertisement for that and get that out, certainly.
Okay, good.
Any more meeting in here?
Commissioner Turner, see if that's all right with him.
Yeah, we'll touch base with Commissioner Turner and make sure, but I, I think the four of us, you know, we probably, that's probably a good date.
Okay. Just letting you know, and we can, I'll hold off on advertisement until I hear back from...
We're meeting in this room?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll meet in this room.
Um, if I could ask a few questions real quick?
Please.
The, the data, I was going through the housing element. Some of the data looks, data looks really current, and some of it doesn't, and I'm comparing it from memory with the old one. And the numbers aren't lining up, and I'm just wondering which one's right and which one's wrong.
Well, that, those, that data was obtained and supplied to us by our, our contractor, so our consultant, should I say. I, I can look at those numbers and, and provide you a response back, Mr. Chair, to Mr. Rawls' question.
Because we, we've not had a lot of houses built, and it's showing about forty percent of our housing built prior to nineteen eighty. In the old one, it was about seventy percent. And I, I just, you know, one of the things that jumped off the page when I was going through the numbers and looking at the population estimates and stuff like that, because you know, I, 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 to be honest with you, thought the last one was just worthless. You know, two thousand nine threw everything out the door, and the data that was used was two thousand ten, and it projected us to have a population right now of eighty-five thousand, and this is showing we have a, a decrease of three hundred sixteen thousand. So I just, you know...
We'll look at those numbers.
Some of the stuff that I'm, I'm going to look at.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Commissioner, the next item is item D.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Priorities Discussion to Identify Time Format and Date to Hold a Formal Workshop. This is your priorities that you chose to have for the year 2021. My question to you is very simple. We need to pick a date, today, of when we're going to do that, and we need to pick a format. And here's what I think, just for my two cents to start the discussion. I see this like a strategic planning meeting. I see us list our priorities, which we've already listed down, and if there's anything else that we want to add at that time, we'll make exceptions for that and go ahead and add it, because it's fluid. And then we can see what's a, what could be done by staff on a policy format, and what would need commissioner action to be taken care of. And I could see us spending, having a facilitator to kind of walk us through, okay, Commissioner Rawls, what were you thinking along those lines? I, no, I do. No, I know, I know, I, I know, I do. But I'm just saying, I really think that this is going to propel us into the future, and, and it's going to keep the, our eye on the ball. And, and that's the hardest thing that we do sometimes. And so so we could pick a moderator. We have one in-house that we, we often use this gentleman in-house who's not paying attention to me at all right now.
I'll be honest with you, I'm, I don't know how kindly I would take to, you know, someone that's junior to me telling me that I'm out of line. I, I just, I think if we're going to do that, we need to bring...
I don't think, no, I don't think anybody would tell you you're out of line.
I, I don't, I, I think that's, that's slippery. It could, it could really...
Okay. So how do you see it happening?
Yeah, we, there's five of us up here. We, we need to discuss the issues that we have. I think we need to leave staff out as much as possible.
Microphone.
Sorry about that. I think, I think we should leave staff out as much as possible, because they don't really have a dog in this fight, and they shouldn't till that we, we take care of our legislative responsibilities. And, you know, so I you start, you start with the top of the list and start striking, you know, discuss it, and then, like you said, decide whether or not to take legislative action, or is it something that the staff can handle? Hand it off to them. They've got their plate full right now. If, if they're doing half of what we've asked them to do, they're, they're busy, and they're undersat, and we know that. So I, I don't know that heaping more on top of them is going to be, this is something, you know, we're, we're the parents, and we have to make decisions in this.
So do you see a facilitator coming in? And, and let's make this an open discussion. Just chime in when you feel.
Yeah, so I have no issue with the facilitator if they're not directing the conversation, if they're just taking notes on the conversation.
Right.
You know, and kind of listing out the things that we talked about and what we find as a priority under, let's say, item A is, you know, the litter thing, and and how we each come up with a solution and putting all the solutions down.
Right.
As far as that goes, because it's hard for any of the five of us to sit up here and make those notes and, and do that while we're having the conversation. So I have no problem with that side of it, as long as the, the person facilitating isn't directing the conversation. So I, I kind of agree with Mr. Rawls, and I, but I kind of agree that we, we need someone to, to keep notes, so to speak, and if we're repeating ourselves over and over and we're all saying the same thing, someone that can go, hey, guys, all five of you just said the same thing, why are you still talking about it? And there, there is some, there is some value to that.
And I think that's kind of the point I was going to make. If all five of us feel very strongly about litter, we know that's a priority. If only two people feel strongly about animal shelter, then it's not a priority. Now, I'm, I'm facetious.
I got it.
So, so I think what we... No, but I think that will, that'll kind of give us the chart. There's four of us interested in this. There's three of us interested in that, only one interested in this. Okay. So, but we, I think we need a facilitator. I think we need someone to help us get to that point, because I kept notes the other day, but I couldn't hear the amen's, like, you know, from, from different people, so...
Yeah, I think we need, we'll need somebody, because it's not fair of you, with you participating, to try to keep, you push us forward. We need somebody to keep us going in the right direction, you know, and not get off on, on tangents either way when there's, when there's five different opinions. So I think we need somebody probably to, you know, take notes and then to keep us going in the right direction, keep us on task, and move from one to the other.
As long as the facilitator is not neutral, I have no problem with it.
Is not what?
Not neutral, that they're neutral to anything that we're talking about.
Right. So would we, so Commissioner Rawls, I respect your opinion on that. Should we look outside of us? Maybe, maybe Regional Planning Council, maybe SBDC, maybe, I mean, there's faci- it, it, it's a one-day thing, so...
I know the SBDC has something that's put out by UNF. They could probably get somebody on. I don't know if Regional Council would have anybody available to fill that role, but it, you know, what we have...
I talked to them, and they, they felt like, Beth felt like she could possibly facilitate it on that, but I told her it would have to be very soon, so it's going to be up to date.
I don't have a problem with it.
So it being an outside resource, I definitely think eliminates the whole idea that there's some pressure from internal, you know, it's, there is conspiracy theorists, and I repart of government that thinks there's a cabal here or wherever, and we, we just don't want that in there, and I, I get that part. So if we can find an outside facilitator, that could be fine.
I don't think that it's, it, it doesn't seem to me to be fair to staff to in, in, interact with this, because they have a dog in the fight. You know, we, we really need to be, we have, if, if somebody's going to be in here, they need to be unbiased, they need to have no dog in the fight. You know, because they're, you're looking at, at job preservation, you know, increase in the budget, decrease in the budget for their department. You know, I think we should have open dialogue and not have, put them in a compromised position, or ask them to put themselves in a compromised position. It's just...
Well, I think, I think we're really at the best spot in our life here as a board, because our staff does not direct our conversation. And they do know that we're the boss, and they take their direction from us, and that hasn't always been the case, and I, it's very refreshing.
Could you give me an instance?
No. Those days are over. Those days are gone, and I'm, I'm glad they are. But I'm glad that I can sit behind the door, or open door, and have a discussion, and they go, have you thought about this? And we're here to help you and not hurt you. So why don't I, why don't we reach out to Cheryl or Regional Planning Council with a date? So we need to look at a date. So give me, look at your...
We just set a date.
No, we haven't set a date for this one. We set it for the comprehensive plan.
Oh, okay.
This is our commissioner priorities. Now, I want to ask you a question. Are you up to two days in a row? Because we could do, we could do Wednesday, the third, or we could do Monday, the first of March. That would give everybody time to plan.
Wednesday, the third, or Thursday, the fourth, you said?
No, I didn't say Thursday, because I have a Regional Planning Council appointing that day.
Wednesday would be better for...
Wednesday?
For May, yeah, cause it's the first.
Tuesday, the third, or Wednesday, the third?
Wednesday, the third.
Okay.
If I had to, I could make, I could make Monday work, I'd hate to come back up here on a Thursday.
Why don't, I'll reach out to the Regional Planning Council and, and see if that's a date that's good for them.
Correct?
I'm sorry?
Nine o'clock?
Yeah.
Same, same schedule as the first.
Nine o'clock, same format as the day before. We go to lunch, break for an hour and a half, come back, finish up the process, um, and, and.
If we do the third, the only question I, I actually have a, a prior commitment at eleven AM for thirty minutes.
We can, we can break.
Lunch at eleven.
We could.
Till twelve-thirty or something.
We, we could, why don't we start at eight-thirty that day? Well, you know, if somebody's coming from Jacksonville.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could break, just for, yeah, break from eleven to twelve-thirty, and.
Yeah, if they're coming from Jacksonville, I'll tell you at six o'clock anyways to get out of all that traffic.
Exactly. Although I went up there the other day, it was a pretty fast drive, but.
Yeah.
Um, and I want, I wanna have this discussion, guys, or Commissioners, very openly like we are now. Like a strategic planning, where no one gets their feelings heard, everybody gets heard, and we can move this agenda forward. Is that, is that how everybody sees that? Okay. I'll reach out to the Regional Planning Council. Mr. Rawls, why don't you reach out to SBDC, talk to them?
Okay.
And, um, we'll, then we'll just decide who's gonna be on the third at that point, okay?
All right.
Okay, good.
Mr. Chairman, before we leave this discussion.
Yes, sir, Mr. Suggs.
So, you know, we're just trying to follow along, so while I'm hearing this, the five Commissioners are gonna meet all day Wednesday to discuss your priorities for the year. You're gonna bring someone from the outside in to assist you with facilitating that meeting. And what I think I heard is that there was no staff involvement, so I'm assuming that day when you folks are in here meeting with your facilitator, you don't anticipate having any staff in there?
No, I don't see that, I see you sitting right where you're at. I, I see, I mean, I, I.
I'm, I'm just listening to the conversation, sir.
I think our staff needs to hear our conversation, but I think Commissioner Rawls, and I can't put words in his mouth, but, you know, he just didn't want staff to be able to have to do this. But surely, staff is gonna be taking notes and seeing what's best, I mean, cause we value your opinion, you know, I mean, we do hire you as our administrator, and I want, I wanna know how you feel about it. So, you know, and, and I want you to see the temperature of the room also.
We're absolutely, absolutely, we're willing to whatever you want us to do.
I mean, I hate to say, I hate to go back to the old days, but staff wasn't usually here in these meetings. And that changed, that changed, and, and I like staff here. Now, I don't think all, all of our staff need to be here, but truly, the ones that need to be here are here, and here are what we gotta talk about. Because, I mean, some of it could be, I think it's gonna be good for all the departments, frankly. I think it, I don't, I don't wanna put words in anybody's mouth, but I, I, I can only see bright things happening here in Putnam County. I don't see us going backwards at all.
I agree with that, and I'll, I'll close with this. Staff is, certainly will be here to be, play any role that the five Commissioners would like for us to play. Uh, I'll make sure that our department heads, our executive directors are in the room. If there's any, uh, conversation needs to be had, we'll be available for that. Uh, we will, uh, we'll play whatever role that the elected officials would like for us to play. At the end of that day, whenever the priorities are set, we'll need to get back together one more time and see how they marry with the current strategic plan that we have, if we need to do any modifications to that and move it forward.
Well, you know what I like? I like the fact that we have a relationship where staff can come to us and say, did you think about this? Have you done this? Um, we can probably implement that, but it's gonna take this to make it happen. I've gotta have feedback from the staff, and I'm sure I'm not the only Commissioner up here that feels that way.
Well, we agree with you on that, and, and we don't wanna come from a place of no, that is not our role. Our role is to support the, the elected officials and whatever policy and, and directive you'd like for us to try to accomplish, and that is, that's, that's exactly what we'll do. And we'll be here to, uh, to assist in any way we can during the, uh, uh, the, the meeting, and, and then whatever the outcomes are, we'll sit down together at that point and go through both plans and see what we need to do next.
I, I don't think everything that we talk about will have anything to do with the strategic plan, obviously, a lot of it will, but some of it might be one-off situations, like some of the things we did talk about. Really, I heard about strategic plan there, about stuff we need to do this year, you know, things like that, so, yeah, and that, and that also staff is important in, because if you guys go, hey, if you just wanna do that in the next six months, it ain't gonna work in this year's budget, maybe we gotta start doing it next year's budget.
Absolutely agree, and, and Mr. Chairman, uh, the, uh, Commissioner Ambler's correct, but it gives us an opportunity to see if we need to move resources around, not just monetary resources, but staffing resources. And maybe modify some dates if we need to, because we're gonna concentrate our priorities in a different area to start with, and that gives, gives us the opportunity to have that open dialogue, so we'll do whatever's necessary.
Well, I don't know how y'all get anything done, cause I'm gonna be honest with you. If, if all five Commissioners do what I do, is walk in your office today, hey, I had this thought, like I did most of the day yesterday, I don't know how, I mean, truly, I, this is us building a roadmap of where we're gonna get to.
So I, I, just for clarity, I'm not saying I don't want staff in the room, what I'm saying is, I don't want staff directing the meeting.
I got it.
Um, there's been times when I've been frustrated, where I've seen staff, Mr. Troyano, um, and I had a lot of people that were frustrated, with, say, the, the fire, the firefighting, or the, the, the fire and EMS committee. There was folks that approached me and said, why is he, why is he running the meeting? When Commissioner Turner said, flat out, I don't want any of our staff running the meeting, and the next thing you know, um, we've got a facilitator that's a staff member. And some people said they really couldn't speak out, they didn't feel comfortable, blah, 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 that's what I'm saying. But if somebody wants to stand up there, that's part of the staff, and try to direct me, I, I, I can't make any promises, because.
We're not.
I, you know, that, that's not in my nature, you know what I'm saying? I'm not trying to say that, that you guys are subservient to us, but at the same time, we're, we, we're responsible for the budget and, and, and the outcome of it. You guys are responsible for putting the budget in motion and working through it. So I have my ideas on how I would like the budget presented to the Commission, you and I have talked about it, we don't agree on the way it's done, I agree that we can disagree. But, um, this is an opportunity for us to be able to speak, for you guys to be able to hear how we are, I'm one of five. I'm not gonna get my way, I promise you, I will not get my way in, in, in that day of discussion on all the items, I'll get some stuff, I won't get some stuff, and at the end of the day, I'll be just as happy walking as I am walking in, I'm a very happy individual. I have no problem with staff, if I did, I'll, I would be in your office complaining. So, um, while I, I'm, I personally would do things differently, it's not the way we're, we're running things right now, that's what this discussion will be about. But as far as, you know, you, I don't, I don't think that we, I don't think we need all the executive directors. One thing that I, you know, I'll just tell you right now, I don't like it when I look out and see a bunch of the executive directors out there, knowing that there's still work that needs to be done that they could be doing that's more productive. If there's something on the agenda that they need to speak to, that's fine, uh, speak to it, and, you know, get back to work, that kinda thing, but, um, you know, personally, I don't, I don't know that we need to have everybody in here necessarily, and this, I, I don't, I don't know that this needs to be a one-day meeting. Maybe we start having the conversation.
Right.
And then, then bring in the relevant staff, because personally, I would like to engage the department heads. I would love to have a frank conversation about how they see their budget, because when I've talked to other department heads in the past, they say, I present a budget, but I haven't seen their, their presentation.
Let, let me add something, and, and I don't mean to interrupt you, Jeff, but you're kinda, you are beating a horse a little bit. Um, so I, I do like what you're saying, though, so in a follow-up meeting, if there's, if there's, if there's an item that we all agree on that only needs JR per se, cause it's about fire rescue, that we have a breakout at some future date, or if there's one that only requires Mr. Troyano, and that way the rest of the staff could be doing something, that maybe, that, that, that comes out of that first meeting, but I don't think we, we, we're not to that point today, so.
Well, but, uh, on, on the other side, let me say what happened today. Sam, I apologize, I didn't let you know about this conversation that was going to happen, but you're our grants guy. You, you had, I mean, when I looked over and saw you here, I went, dang gum, I forgot to invite you, you know, so had you not been in this room, you might've been watching it from your computer, I don't know that, but you would've said, hey, I'm that guy, I didn't think about it, and I apologize for that. So I think that's where we work together at, when we do have people in here. I don't know if someone wanted to get you, or you just, yeah, somebody, okay.
Not, not to get on my, not to get on my soapbox, but if we did an evening meeting, then any staff that chose to come could come.
Yeah, I hear you. Okay, good, so we got that, we're gonna do Wednesday, the third, all-day, strategic plan-type format, and, um, and it might go into more days as we, and I'm sure it will. I, I can't imagine we'll get done in one day, it just, I don't think that's possible. All right, since we're.
Anything's possible.
Well, I know, I just think it's, I, I'm excited about it, Frank.
I, I really, I really am sincere when I say that there's seven days in a week. I'll make myself available seven days a week if I have to, because I really feel like, I, 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 I see a huge change in the way things are done now versus when I first got elected, no doubt. I think that there is a, a huge snowball that's gonna roll down the hill, and I hope that doesn't offend anybody, because it involves snow, but it will not get any smaller, it will get bigger. And I'm in a different position than some of the other folks, whether they're staff or other Commissioners, and I'm in a unique position of watching this train wreck happen, happening. And, you know, had a conversation with, with the gentleman at lunchtime.
You're talking about the economy.
Yes. And we are, it, it's so fragile right now, you know, and Janet Yellen says, we'll have a fully-employed, um, econ, or a fully-employed economy by the end of the year. You know, it, so that, all that means is we're gonna have inflation, and we're not prepared for it, we can't get ourselves prepared fast enough, because we don't have the budget to allow for that. Uh, we have so many things that are fixing ahead of us, and if we don't have these, you know, the, the budget is Plan A, what's Plan B? Our reserves, that doesn't last very long, what's Plan C? You know, um, we are, we are a very, um, in a very, very, very tenuous position right now, and I, I, I hate to, you know, be the guy that's sounding the, the horn, but when St. John's County started losing asset value in two thousand and eight and nine, but what they did affected us. And they've built this really nice city on a hill now, and they're continuing to build and continue to build, and if the economy starts to slow down, as they slow down, we need to be in a position to not have our property values drop like they did before. Put ourselves in a position to be more attracted to people looking to get out. Um, you know, I had a conversation today with a gentleman that wants to come in, he's looking at building, um, and I can't say a name right now, but, uh, two hundred single-family detached rental units for median-income wage, or eighty to a hundred percent of median, not, the kinda like the, the presentation you and I saw up in Jacksonville.
Right.
Um, only at, at a different scale. So, we need those folks in here right now. We need people to shop at our local stores, and spend their money, and pay taxes, and all that.
Well, Commissioner Rawls, let me say, I appreciate you sounding the, the alarm, cause what I've learned in this business is it gives us an opportunity to be ahead of something, okay? We can either bury our head in the sand, or we can go, we got an opportunity here, we have highly-trained staff that can advise us. So I think working together, I know working together, we're going to, Putnam County might not even get a hiccup, but if we do, we'll be prepared for that hiccup, and we'll start working our way to that. And if, and if it doesn't happen, we're a better community because of it, so. All right, so, um, any other further comments? Okay, we're gonna go to a public comment on miscellaneous items, is there any public comment on miscellaneous items? Mr. Hayes, if you'll come to the podium, and if you'll state your name and address for the record, you also have three minutes, this portion of the agenda is designed to allow Citizens, you, an opportunity to bring matters to the attention of the Board. It is not reasonable to expect the Board will engage your debate, if deliberation about matters in which the Board has received no prior information as part of the agenda, please limit your comments to three minutes. Mr. Hayes, you have the floor, sir.
My name's Douglas Hayes, I live at two sixteen Huron Avenue, Satsuma. Uh, before you start the clock.
Too late? Too late, go ahead, just go ahead, Mr. Hayes, don't.
Well, anyway, Carl Flag told me if I'm asking questions, I, it doesn't count as a time.
Flag is no longer at this podium.
Yeah, well, that's why I ran to begin with, so anyway.
But I appreciate his input.
Yes, okay, uh, Mr. Suggs?
Mr. Hayes, you'll address it to the Board.
Okay, how much does Mr. Suggs get paid?
We can give you that information.
Okay, cause I've tried to find the, the appropriate number.
Public record.
Okay, well, I haven't been able to find it. Uh, the other question is, the Common Ground members, um, they were supposed to be provided for public record, haven't been able to find the membership of Common Ground?
I don't know what you're talking about.
When the Chamber of Commerce has submitted a letter of recommendation on behalf of a group called Common Ground, and it was.
Private group, okay.
Ninety days ago.
And anyway, for some reason, it seems to be vague as to who the membership of Common Ground is, and I would like to know the membership.
Um, I, I, on the video, um, Joe Pickens did name off the members, I couldn't name them off right now, but.
And it really isn't, it's not our place to disclose.
I think if you went back and watched that meeting, it's on, on YouTube, probably.
Yeah, it's on.
They're, it, all their, they're all named.
Okay, I'll try to find it. Um, okay, now I'm ready for my clock.
No, you've been on your calls, go ahead, you got a minute and seventeen seconds.
Yeah, all right, good luck.
Come on.
Okay, uh, moving the public comment to the end of the meeting is a lockstep with the current Marxist movement to stifle the citizen, and a testament of the oligarchy that you have formed in the past.
That is not true. That's a, that's a political statement you're making from a microphone.
That's right.
Actually.
I don't understand why you moved it to.
They had done two transparencies, we have public, we have two public comment periods now instead of one, so continue on, Mr. Hayes.
Well, the concern.
I'm not supposed to deliberate with you, I apologize.
The concern to me is that by moving the public comment to the tail end of the meeting, that crazy people like me and other citizens that have concern, um, don't have to wait until the end of the meeting before that we can speak our minds, where.
You wanna hear, we have to, uh.
I'd like to address that if I could.
I, I found that it's, it's inconvenient for the average citizen that may wanna just come in and complain about their road, and then go back about their day. Instead, they have to sit it out, and they don't know how long the meeting is gonna be, so now their whole personal schedule's messed up.
You've sat here an hour and twenty-one, four minutes, and you've learned a lot today.
Yeah, I actually got to speak on it a second time, but I'm fortunate, other people may not be. I actually have an employer that's, uh, flexible enough to allow me to come to the meetings, okay? Um, the next thing is in regards to the appropriations that you had requested, um, just, because you had asked for monies to help with, with the, when there was an appropriations request and the representative was here. And there was ma, mention of about, uh, money needed to repair the swimming pool, and perhaps a pickleball court.
Yeah.
Okay, Walmart Foundation has a grant available, and, and it's a five thousand dollar grant, available to municipalities and nonprofits, and you might be able to get the funding, cause it's a community-oriented event, um, for the repair of the pool. If the pickleball league wants to file, then they could possibly get the money for the pickleball court. So there's your grant availability, Mr. Grant Rider. And so then, anyway, um, the next thing is that I had, um, a wonderful conversation with the safety organi, uh, officer coordinator gentleman over there? Anyway, and I wanna commend that he knows a lot. Um, have a little concerns.
Mr. Hayes, I, your time's up, we gave you another minute, because I interrupted you, and I apologize, but try to wrap it up very, very fast.
Okay. Anyway, my concern is that, uh, one of the fire departments had made a request for what they call a spreader extru, uh, also known as a jaws alive, and was denied, and was pointed out that they would be able to show on scene and do an evaluation, and then another fire department that has one would be able to do the extrusion, cutting, or whatever it is, by utilizing that mechanism. But if you want the, um, fire department to have a first response, why are we denying them the tools they need? Is it a money thing, or is it a micromanagement at the higher level?
All right, thank you, Mr. Hayes, for your comments today.
I'd like to address it if I could, or a couple of things, actually. Number one, there is no cultural Marxism by moving the public comments to the back of the agenda. Um, I think it's more respectful of people's time to allow the people that are here to address agenda items to speak ahead of us voting on the consent agenda. And what happened before was, we would bring the consent agenda up, and then we would vote on it. Um, if people didn't speak during public comment, well, this time they're being warned ahead of time, if you have anything on the agenda, speak now. Then we go through the consent agenda, then, then if there's anything else that's pertinent, like, uh, you know, we had this morning, you know, a hearing, or something from the planning board, then we would take care of that. Then the public comment comes into play, and they can sit and listen, and maybe their questions are answered before they have to get up and speak, maybe they're not, maybe they need to get up and speak. Um, as far as the, the HERS tool, that, that's, that's, that's staff's responsibility to decide where they distribute equipment, or whether or not somebody gets a grant or not, um, for extrication, because we don't need extrication every fire. or whether or not somebody gets a grant or not, um, for extrication, because we don't need extrication at every fire station either. Um, you know, it'd be great if we had it on every fire truck, but it's not practical.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes, thank you, Mr. Rawls. Okay, um, let's go, let's skip around for just a minute, county attorney comments?
None, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Commando. County Administrator, I think you had an item?
I was gonna say no comment, but, uh.
No, I thought we talked about something yesterday, and I said, bring it up, but maybe, I didn't write it down, I apologize.
Okay.
If it comes up to you.
Was it in one of those conversations we had when you walked into my office yesterday on the, yeah?
I was really tired yesterday after.
I'll try to remember what it was, boss.
That's okay, we'll, we'll get, but you have no, you have no comment?
I have.
No, it's going to happen in one hour, so.
No comment from the county administrator, sir.
Okay, so let's go to commissioner requests, I'll start to my right, Mr. Adams there.
I want to say that I, listen to all of us commissioners, and I, I appreciate every one of us and our inputs, and I, I, I'm very excited about moving forward with this, working together in a, a separate type session, where we can bounce things off one another. Um, like we've talked about a dozen times now, since I've been here, you know, the sunshine law does not allow us to get together as a group around a table and talk about things unless we're here in front of the people. There's Mr. Hayes' guns unless we're here in front of staff, but, uh, you know, there are people that do watch on YouTube. I mean, I will tell you this morning, when we were having that, that conversation, there was at least twenty people on YouTube, because they were messaging me, saying their opinions, what was going on and stuff. I, I try to ignore that during the time that we're sitting here, but they, they do message in. Sometimes they have some good ideas of, hey, you should think about saying some of this, and sometimes it's not. Um, so, again, I'm, I'm more probably in tune with social media than the rest of you. I don't know why I got on that path, because originally I joined Facebook to, uh, play Words With Friends with my wife, and somehow it's turned into an animal. I guess I allowed that to happen. But I, I just want to say, I, I appreciate and, and look forward to that session, especially the, the workshop-type thing where we're gonna discuss our priorities, as well as the comprehensive plan, because I value the input of all four men to my left, one's not here today, but I, I value everyone's input as much as the communities, because we're all hearing from different people in the community. There is some overlap, we see that in the people that walk up to us when they're in the room and things like that. But for the most part, we tend to have a different subset of the community talking in each of our ears. So, uh, the only way we can bring that together is through these meetings, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Adams there, Mr. Pickens?
Yeah, I just.
Dun, 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 dun.
Um, I do look forward to, um, you know, our priorities, um, workshop, and also to start, um, reviewing the comprehensive plan. And I want to thank the, um, the Planning Commission for their hard work. It was a number of meetings, long meetings, uh, to get this document to where it is now, and I just want to thank them, because they don't get paid much, if they go to a site visit, they get a few dollars, but, um, so, it was a lot of, a lot of hard work. Um, and that's all I have, I do, I hope that you're gonna bring it where we can maybe, um, finalize some of these other dates for the town hall meetings.
I'm, I'm, I'm loose, if, if, you know, I, I, I was thinking the first Monday's just an easy day, um, Wednesdays are. So, you know, we've, if we're, we're through March, we got May, or April, we got May, June, July, August, September. Um, any, any of those would be great, I'm, I'm not committed, uh, anything anywhere, but, uh, I just, I want to make sure that we're having, uh, a monthly meeting with the public, um, you know, letting them know that, uh, we're, we're working towards, um, making, making Putnam County more accessible, answering their concerns, their questions. Um, you know, I don't really see that our, our citizens complain, I think that they raise concerns. Although I did have a gentleman yesterday who was, um, really harsh regarding trash collection, the fact that he has a large trash can that didn't get picked up for some reason. I did not know that there's a thirty-two gallon limit, if you have more than a thirty-two gallon trash can.
I know who the gentleman was.
Oh, um, so, uh, I, I got an earful, but, you know, I.
Well, they can't pick up, I mean, imagine.
They could get two trash cans, too.
I, I, you know, I, I was watching them today, and they had the machine that, that tips it over, and when I called Daniel, Daniel said, the tippers get ripped off because their roads are so bad. They, they drop a tire down, it rips the hydraulic thing off, and they're shearing off bolts, and so I, I. Uh, uh, that's a conversation, but, you know, that, that's the kind of thing where if, I think if we're out in the community and we're meeting with the public, then, um, and we're on their turf, they know that we care, they know that we're engaged, they know that we're working, um, for, for what's best for them, and they have input as well, you know.
I, I, I do like the idea of.
Hang on, Mr. Pickens still has the floor, so.
Okay, yeah, if, since we're talking about that, and that'd be, in my comments is, um, I reached out to Pomona Park, and their town hall's closed.
Yeah.
We could meet in, um, in their park area, but I think if we push them further into the year, that, that maybe they'll open that facility up, because it really, I think we need to have them inside. So, you said we're good for April, so May, we don't have anything in May, do we?
Nothing in May, June, July.
I'll, I'll set Crescent City up for May.
Okay.
Um. And that's maybe skip a month, and then July.
Can we wait on that until that priority meeting? To, to go too much further into the year?
Okay, well, I'll set Crescent City up for May, because I talked to them when you can use the, um, the Crescent City, uh, women's club.
That's a great facility, or great, uh.
Facility there.
So, yeah.
I, I just wanted to add a, a, a location to your list, and, um, the people in Johnson proper, Johnson lower by Dollar General, the RCMA facility, which is a Putnam County park, we really don't have a facility in Johnson, west, fireworks Putnam.
Sure that is.
But, uh, they, they said they, they would love to see, unfortunately, it has to be an outdoor-type thing, but at that facility, and then that's a pretty well-populated community, so at the RCMA park, and what's that park called? The Johnson Park, I think it's what it's called.
No, it's the Irene Monroe Walker.
There you go. So, if we, if that could be a location in, in the list, and I, I don't know if we want. The only thing I like about one person keeping the list, whether we make the arrangements or not, is then how do we get back together on?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
You, are you gonna set that up?
Well, hang on, this time.
Okay, so I just want you to add to your list, so that when we're, when we discuss it at this upcoming workshop, that, that's one of the ones on your list.
Okay, so we'll just go through May? Okay, that's it?
Mr. Rawls? Anything else?
I think we've discussed enough today, but.
You know, I, I, I do want to say thank you all very much, we do have a fair, the fair board's gonna be here at four thirty. Uh, those of you who can stick around, the conversation is going to be, how can we help the fair be successful this year? Um, like, again, we've invited, JR's gonna be here, Mary Garcia, and, um, told the fair board to bring whoever they wanted to bring. Uh, so I know JR, Jay, TK, Kyle Heinz, I think Amy will be here. Um, and we have done, I, I have actually talked to the fair director in Manatee County, and he sent me all their schematics, and I think I sent it on to you, and to JR, and to Jay, and looked at how they did all their social distancing, their routing of people, how they did their steer show, and their buyer's thing, and, and, um, how they kind of limited a little bit of inside facility uses. So, I, I think that, and they ran a pretty successful fair, so, um, but I think it's important today that they know that this commission's behind them, because I think our children out there deserve this opportunity. They've worked hard during the year, no fault of them, that COVID hit, and they've had enough taken away from them. And if we can help them be successful with some type of limitations that, that are agreed upon, I think we can make this happen for those people. On the other hand, I want to say something, you know, we talk about evening meetings, and I'm, we're gonna talk about this at the priority meeting. We had eight last year, and you go, well, really, we had eight five oh five meetings, because I had some research done on it. When we know there's a five oh five, we're here anyway. And that could be something that we could go, that might be a meeting that we could have here in this facility, or somewhere else. So, kind of think about those lines when we go, well, we haven't had any, we really do have evening meetings. We just, maybe we need to enhance that to have better, and I'm all for that. But we can talk about that at that next meeting on our commissioner priority meeting, because I did pull the list of them. Other than that, we will, uh, recess until four thirty, and then we'll be back, for those of you who can stay. If you can't stay, that's fine, but we recess this meeting till four thirty, thank you.